This meeting to order. Stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
It's been moved.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, we'll go right to public comment. And. Read my. It's in here somewhere, hold on. There we go. Uh, so protocol for addressing the board, you may present, thank you. Um, a concern to the board during this time reserved for the hearing, a public comment. If this is case, we ask that you prior to start of the meeting, sign in noting the topic you intend to address to the board. Come to the microphone. And state your name. Uh, do not reflect diversely on the political or economic view, ethnic background, character, or motives of any individual. And please keep your comments concise, non-emotional, and brief. And we'll do it for three minutes. And for a total of thirty. And we only have one signed in, Eva Petrov.
Eva.
Eva, sorry.
Don't worry. Good evening, Prosser, Board and Community. I am speaking tonight as a parent of a Prosser High School student. My name is Eva Petrov and my son attends PHS. This past year, my husband and I were made aware of a practice some teachers utilize at Prosser High School called employability points. Upon further research, it sounds like these points are to support the whole child to be successful in their future, be it career or college ready. As an avid district, I would assume the employability points were meant to support that focus. I want to be clear. My issue is not around teachers grading my son for his ability or inability to be present in class. It is, however, around the fact that his grade was negatively impacted as a result of losing those points. Attending that district and state for swim, music events to promote band, and admissions trip to an orphanage. All of these activities were pre-arranged and pre-excused per Washington State guidelines and PSD requirements. Additionally, my son was not sitting at home drinking juice and sipping chicken noodle soup. However, losing employability points and having your grade affected for not attending school when running a fever or vomiting will be another discussion point for a future board meeting. We need to create an equitable avenue for students to be responsible and stay homesick instead of penalizing them for not spreading a virus. But I digress. My goal is all school-related, pre-arranged, pre-approved absences, not penalize a student's grade. Our students should have a no count marked for employability points on those days as they are advancing themselves and their schools respectfully. We have penalized our students long enough. To clarify, some of these points can be worth as much as one-fifth of an entire trimester's rate. We have moved beyond participation points and are now negatively affecting a student grade even when they did the right thing and got permission to be absent. This past year, my son had five different teachers and they graded four different ways. I know it would be impossible for everyone's grading practices to be on the same page. As a parent and a community member, I am aware of the hard teachers and those that you want to have a specific time of year. In fact, most parents are. However, I have no desire to have my son dilute his course load. If we are unable to require teachers to use employability points equitably, then I just respectfully request that PSD have the same points excused through a no count when pre-arranged, pre-excused, or school-related. It should not factor who your parent is or who will stand up for you. Every child in Prosser deserves the same advocate for an equitable education and fair practices. Make a change and stop allowing our students' grades to be negatively impacted through employability points. Use them as their name implies. Are you late for worker school? Employability points affected. Did you no call no show? Employability points affected. Did you let your supervisor know ahead of time that you would be absent? Employability points excused. When you know better, Prosser, you do better. So do better. Thank you, and I will see you at the next board.
Thank you. Like, do we have any on Zoom? Okay, we'll close that portion of the meeting. And we'll go to student rep, 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 student rep reports. Machine?
I have nothing to.
Okay. Nothing. Well, thanks for being here on. Nice summer day. With that, we'll move on to consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
A second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um, next up, uh, is discussion is strategic planning. And I don't know. Deanna was, is she on Zoom?
I don't, yeah, it is on Zoom.
Oh.
Deanna, can you hear us?
Yeah, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm on the freeway, it's kind of loud, so. Um. So, so the bad document you have is the most updated version, it's, it's. We kind of put all that on hold until we had a, uh, interim superintendent and, and Kim and I and the ad team have not. Have sat down and had a discussion about it yet. So, um, I think we just need to know how you want to proceed if we could. Take that information back to the committee and do like an overview and. And take feedback and, and see if there's any adjustments we want to make. Um. I mean, it would be, it would be really good for us to have it ready for school to start.
Yeah, I mean, my opinion, this Jason, um, that. So we can have it ready, maybe we can schedule the committee to review this final document because I think it's been a while since we met anyways. Um. And then kind of keep proceeding so we can get it done. Wh- when would you anticipate being able to do? Um, do that meeting with the committee?
Um, well, I probably, I probably should, I probably should have one big, that meeting with that. It really doesn't matter, honestly. We could do a virtual meeting, um. The next couple of weeks, you know, principals are trying to get a little bit of time off in July because they. Haven't had a lot of time off, so maybe we could do that, um, right, right early in August. And then, uh, make any revisions from there and then bring it to the board for review, maybe at that. Um, second or that first regular meeting or that first maybe the study session and then we could bring it for action. I. I mean, I've had a really hard time, like I need my, to bring my sexual health committee together, but I've had a really hard time getting people in the summer. Because I want my sexual health committee to review all the community comments, but I, I'll get like three people that can come to the meeting just because everybody's busy or out of town. It's, it's a hard time.
Okay.
Um, we could do it virtually. I mean, we could do like, like, uh. We could do kind of like a board meeting where we present it and people could be there in person or they could be there virtually if they're out of town. I think we could go over that, um, act item. We could probably do that in an hour and take feedback, um, in different ways and. Um, then go from there. I mean, I, I could do it whenever. We think it's. We know we're not going to get everybody there. Well, this, we could, we could just do our best, put, sort of eating out maybe a couple of weeks. And try to give people time. Maybe do two different kinds of meetings, maybe do a midday meeting and a evening meeting and take that feedback and put it together with the, with the leadership team.
Any questions, comments?
Sounds good.
I, I did have one question and I can email it to you as well, Deanna, since you're driving. I only saw one. Like timeline for, and it was under culture communication. And it was establish and implement district inclusionary plan by fall twenty twenty six, and I was wondering why that was so far out.
Um, so like full, that's when full, uh, like our full inclusionary practices. That's the law. That's when we're required to do it by the state, so that's probably why that has the date. Um, the ac- the activities that are in there, we tried to order them by year, like when we would do them. But we didn't put any like specific timelines on anything. That one is required, we're required to have our inclusive, our inclusionary practices done in twenty twenty six.
That makes sense then, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one comment. Um. The strategic master plan, developing the strategic master plan document. Um, we had, um. We had. Brought together quite a large community group. Um, to develop this whole document and I, I'm assuming, or I would like to hope that we're. Can you, can you hear me, Deanna?
Yeah.
Okay, I would like, I would, I would hope that. Be, before we, um. We, um. Take any final, any, make any final, uh, decisions on the, on the final document that we are able to bring that group back together. To just kind of review what the final document's going to look like or, or review it together with the community group that we brought together because, um. Um. I, I would like that community buy-in to the strategic master document.
Uh, for sure. That's the meeting I'm referring to is trying to bring that group, that group together, but maybe offering two different opportunities and then. You know, trying to collate whatever that feedback is, uh. Oh, but we could try one big meeting and then maybe a backup.
Okay, so we wouldn't limit that. Okay, so we would try to limit that to just. I'm sorry.
No, no. No, but the leadership team, the leadership. Does the refinement because like the refining and work spending doesn't work. We're not, it's not very efficient in the, in the bigger.
Right. I agree on that. I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity before we say, okay. It's done. That, uh, and finalize that we have an opportunity to. To bring that, that group back and say, here's, here's the. Here's what we finished with and kind of get that stamp of approval for their hard work on it also.
Yeah, they've been great. I, that would be some, that would be the meeting we would do here in the next, I'd try to do in the next couple of weeks. Um, if, you know, we're ready to move forward with that, that would be, that'd be great. So I'd like to be able to. Get it finalized.
Okay. Good, we're on the same page then. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Deanna.
You're welcome.
Uh, moving on, uh, to action items, uh, A vouchers and payroll.
Motion, we, um, fast vouchers and payroll as per them.
I'll second that. I can have a question. And it's, we have a payment to YVCC and CBC for running start. And the YVC, that was the last voucher in the first part, nine zero seven 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 six. And it says it's for spring quarter. Is CBC also just for the spring quarter or is that a semester? And the reason I was asking, so together it comes at forty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars, so essentially fifty thousand dollars. It'd be interesting to note. At the, at the cost for the year, are kids going because they would rather have a college credit and is it something that they can capture in the college and the classroom classes? Or are they going because they feel that they need to get a class that those schools offer to get ready for college that we, we don't have at the high school? And I think that would be good information to find out and see how we can. Address. Thank you.
I'm going to YVC in the fall and, um, I'm personally going because I don't want to have to pay for two years of college. So I'm planning on getting my AA, um, by the time I'm a senior. So that's why I'm going. It's not because of anything that Prosser can't offer. The AA pretty much is what Prosser can't offer, but that's the reason why.
Well, thank you for your input.
And I will add to that. I think that. Because of our college and the high school offerings and our AP offerings, I think. If the student shared, I think that would probably be the sentiment. In years prior to college and high school, that might not have been the case. Um, because they wanted college and the high school credit, right, or they wanted. Uh, more rigorous courses, so they would go to YVC. Now you're seeing more students taking the college and the high school. And those that are attending our community colleges are AA-driven. Um, traditionally, you see those AA-driven are the ones that have a plan for an extended degree. And so they can do that by the, she's nodding her head, by the time they're eighteen, then they're twenty, they're not going to their extended degree, whether that's medicine or anything like that. They're not so old by the time they get done, plus the financial component.
No, that's good information. I think, and we had quite a few kids at graduation too that were acknowledged for having their AA and that was wonderful. That was my only comment.
Do, do you know of other students that? Um, attend without the goal of having their AA?
Uh, yeah, a lot of kids are going to get like, um. Different medical, like. Credits, yeah, medical credits that they're not necessarily AA-oriented, they're just going for those medical credits and then they're going to go to a four-year after. Um. After high school and then they don't really care for the AA though. They just want to get that like out of the way because they cost so much money and takes a long time.
There's some like prereq classes that a lot of students have been taking, so they don't have to pay as much for when they actually go to college, whether or not they get their AA, it's their prereqs for the actual course, so. Thank you for that.
I appreciate your input. So I have a motion and a second to approve vouchers and payroll. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next up, we'll move to item B, out-of-state travel.
Make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel request for the Prosser High School Boys Basketball Team.
No, second, Jason.
Been moved and seconded to approve the out-of-state travel request for boys basketball. Any comments or questions? Are the coaches going to drive or is it for the hiring drivers?
They're practicing now when we came up.
I think, uh. I think when they did it last year, like, I think the coaches drove and parents, you know, would take their own kids and stuff like that. But I don't, I'm just speaking in the past, I don't know about this one. So it's been moved and seconded to approve out-of-state travel for boys basketball. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, Rick, it's your turn.
It is, I am going to be the lone. Sorry.
No, no.
So this is, this is our annual, um, final. Phase of the four-year plan. And the four-year plan is developed by each, each of the CTE departments with their advisory committees. And then portions of that are put into the district like four-year plan and it's an OSPI requirement. CTE has a bunch of the, the requirements that other. Other areas of education don't have simply because of, of the extra funding that we get. So it's a bit of the accountability piece for us. And it's a pretty flexible plan. The first, like twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four, they're probably the most accurate portions of the plan because. Twenty-four and twenty-five, you're just kind of, they're kind of like place workers. Because things are going to change. It's really, it is a plan and it's really fluid, like we were talking earlier. Some of the things that were scheduled for twenty, for twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five. Got bumped up to this, this year, the, the, um, sports medicine and the training position. Because advisory committee, the health science advisory committee said, hey, we don't want to wait on this anymore. We know, we said last year, this is the plan, but we're going to move it. We want it done this year. And so, so. That's why the first two years of the plan are probably, probably the most accurate and even going into next year. There is already, there's already been discussion on changes of, of the plan for next year. And there's already been changes in, going in place for this year that, that came after the plan was approved by the general advisory committee. So it is, it is very fluid, so I'm just going to try to give you, give you some of the highlights of it. Um, and. Ask questions at any time and if you ever want to come in and visit or call me, you know, I'm always available. So educator, educator licensing, that's pretty standard. That one's hardly ever going to change, Peggy. It's going to be a cut and paste. It's just verifying that, you know, we're certified, we're, we're meeting our codes. And then, you know, not in that, but in other plans, all of our teachers get professional development throughout the year. Um, especially when we offer new courses like the Project Lead the Way courses, those teachers get, get the training in that curriculum. Um, Ryan, Ryan Woods doing two this year, Kason's doing another one. Uh, Steve Hader, for example, right now is up at WSU doing a case curriculum for small ages. So not only do, not only are they certified, but we keep them up to date for, for new classes or, or current classes. Um, so the next section. The plan that you can have is, it's pretty flexible. OSPI, you can use their template, you can modify their template, you can create your own template. And so as, uh, we've discussed with the Tri-Tech consortium, a lot of these areas like this, first one, the curriculum instruction and the rest of them. If you did them separately, they're going to overlap. And you're going to be saying the same thing multiple times. And so kind of come up with a plan to, to reduce the redundancy. And so for this section, some of the highlights, um, for, so this year, we started, we started computer science and robotics and at Prosser High School, we did not have that previously. Um, we started with an engineering class, um, this year. Uh, we offered ag business foundations for the first time and as we've talked a lot throughout. Gosh, maybe from the first meeting, there's been a couple of different meetings around DECA and that transition and starting the school store. And, and doing everything for that. And so whenever we start the new curriculum or new programs, we're also getting the supplies and equipment. Um, for the store, we're getting, we're getting classroom where the school store is going to be set up. They've got the storage, they've got the heat press there. They're going to start slow and as, as they've been recommended and we talked about, but as Elise alluded to earlier. It's probably going to blow up and we're probably going to have to get another press. It's going to be my guess next year. That's my hope, at least. Um. So some things we're looking at as far as next year. W- with this, uh. We're, we're increasing our, our computer science offerings through, of doing a computer engineering course. Where the kids will get a COMTIA, uh, cer- certification at the end of it. It's basically going in and doing networking, you know, rebuilding computers and fixing computers. It's, it's less of the, it's more the technical side. Like more of the skills, more of the trade side of computers, I guess would be the best way to put it. Um, of course, we're going to start the, the, uh, student store and, and the course associated with that. And we're rebranding, for years, we have only offered CAD. And that, up until last year, that was our only STEM-type course. Um, so we're with, with Ryan retiring, we're changing CAD over into engineering. And so we're keeping components of engineering. In fact, I don't know if the course Brian's taking now or the next one is. It's an interesting acronym. It's in Introduction to Engineering Design. So the acronym is I, ID. It's, so, so we're like, project, you guys got to change that. And so that, that's, that's going to, that will be the CAD component that we have. And then we're, he's going to do the, in Essentials of Engineering and then we're looking at, and robotics. And then next year, we'll look at expanding into another project, lead the way engineering program. So in two years, we've gone to really no STEM program to going to have a, a pretty good STEM program, um, at Prosser High School. And then, as I talked about earlier, the, the sports medicine and trainer position, we haven't listed ID from the beginning. That's going to be a tough one to fill. Um. I, at this point, we're getting late in school year. I don't anticipate filling it for this next school year, but we will keep it open. You, you never know. And hopefully we, we can get it next year. Kim has some ideas. Um, she's done some work on, on, uh, places we can recruit from hopefully for that. Uh, okay, so then the next place, the next areas, safe practices and facilities. That's really where we, we make sure that we're, we're following, um, safe practices in the labs and in the shops. We're ensuring that. And then, then we're also looking at our facilities and our equipment to make sure everything's up to date. And that we have all of the things that we, that we, that the teachers want or need to teach the class. Um. One of the things that came up even after this plan was Steve Hader had done some research in, into a virtual reality welding station. And looked into it and he feels that it would off, it would be, um, like having a, an assistant teacher in there. It'll allow the kids who are really struggling because it gives an instant feedback they can see on, on, on doing the weld. And it would allow the kids that are more advanced to do more advanced welds and possibly lead to some certifications. And so he, he's really excited about that. He talked to each of the, 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 uh. Advisory members to get their input and they were on board as long as we had the funds to do it. It's a pretty significant purchase. It's, it's sixty-five thousand dollars. But we do, we do have the money in the budget and we'll still have carryover for next year. So I'm working on moving forward with that on with, uh, the welding. So that. Technology's everywhere, man. It's, 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 it's everywhere. Um. So that, so that's kind of what we're doing as for big things facility-wise, um. As other than, you know, making sure people have all the lab equipment and doing some updates there. Uh, the leadership and employability is that this is, this is real, I'll be honest, this is the best part of CTE, it's the CDSOs. It's your FFA, it's your DECA, it's your HOSA. And we had, we had some tremendous activity this year. We had, I think, what was it, eighty-three competitors at the state level and twenty different teams. Ten of those teams placed in that state. Um. You know, we didn't have any state winning teams, but we, we had some, we had some that were close. And we did have, we did have some tremendous individuals that I'm going to call out right now, but. Remember for each of these kids that placed or what I talked about, there's probably two more that I could talk about. And so we had Isabella Martinez, she got the wave scholarship this year, which is fifty-two hundred dollars for two years to any school that she wants. Um, and then she was also chosen the region six member of the year by, by, by DECA. Um, Alex Wentz is a junior, placed first in Ag Mac and along with that, he got a thousand dollar scholarship to Perry. But I think he also got a ten thousand dollar scholarship. It was either to UTI or Wyoming Tech. And he's only, he's, he's only a, a junior, so he can do it next year. So I asked Hader like, so. If he wins again, does he get a four-ride? So, so that's really exciting. Um. And then, then, uh, Luke Munn, he was first state in state soils and land evaluation. J.C. Kaufman was the state FA, state FA star farmer finalist. She was in the top four for that in state, which is amazing, um. And that, that's, that's quite a, an honor. Andrew, Andrew Gray was a state FA degree winner. And then we had our HOSA, HOSA team of Hasley Derrick, Cassandra Flores, Karen Delgado, and Lily Hoy and Ashley Gomez. That just got back a couple of weeks ago from HOSA. They had a great experience. I was able to get an article in the paper today. Saw that about it. And so, you know, once again, pro, our, our kids are. We're going out in the community, out, out into the state and even internationally and representing, representing Prosser raping. Um. And another highlight is post-high school articulation sections and through, through CTE, we do have to credit opportunities. And we have like total of nine classes, New Wollala and CBC for forty-five credits. And as we add different courses in, we're going to, we're going to look at trying to get more, more, more new credit opportunities. Um. And then we have the advisory committee section. I really appreciate the work of our advisory committees. They attend at least three meetings a year, provide input on four-year plans, on program evaluations. On hiring people, on, um, when we created a, a new course, looking at the frameworks and making sure it, it meets what they think. I mean, they. They're, they're a very valuable resource.
Who is your advisory committee? Who, who sits on your advisory committee?
Uh, well, uh, there's, so there's, there's one for each of the departments. And I don't, I can get you their names. I don't have, have them all.
That'd be great.
Remembered right now, but like the, the general advisory committee is, um. Is Ginger. Uh, there's one, uh, Liz Elliot is the chair. Then there is, um, John Forrest. And Burster and. Oh, and Carla Green. For, for the, for the sports, for the health sciences. And then each, each of, each of the five departments have, um, community members also.
Thank you.
Pretty good, it's, 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 it's a good representation. And then the last section, well, not, well, not last thing we can talk about, is, is the, uh. Is the work-based learning. And so with that, we're continuing to work with WSU and, and I do out at Research Station. He's working with his staff this year to try to figure out who wants to have repatience and work with kids. And hopefully he gets out of place and we can start working with a small group of kids at going out there somewhat to like they do for health ops. Um, several meetings with him, he's had several meetings with, with WSU. Uh, they really, they're really pushing him to get this, uh, going and want it to be a model program. Not only for the state, for the other research stations, but they want it to be a, a national model. So we're going to start small, figure out what's wrong, figure out what, what, what we broke from the start and fix it. And, um, hopefully build on it. So that's, that's another exciting opportunity for our kids. And then along with that, um, I didn't have the data because we were still doing testing, but, um. Uh we said, as a department, we decided that we needed to offer more industry-recognized certificates or IRCs to our students. And what what a student gets that, they they test that and they get a certificate and it identifies. The skills and competencies that they met through that test, so they can go to employer and take it. And so we have everything from a food handler's card up up through the CNA. And then next year, the 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 comp Tia, comp Tia one. And so each department had a variety of, oh, we have one to get quickened this year. And so we had to be have have a variety of of certificates available. And I'd like to say the number is five hundred and nine RE, IRCs were earned by Prosser students this year. Some students are multiple, so it's not five hundred and nine students, but five hundred and nine I IRCs were for our students. And then um. Page five isn't here, it's simply the last, it's the last page, it's the signature page that Jason will sign. And so that's why there's only four or five pages listed. And then, of course, none of this would happen without that, our outstanding teachers. We have just tremendous, tremendous uh. Room of teachers. Ally, she was top queen in the state for students earning MOS certificates. Last year, McKenzie was the Crystal Apple Award winner from 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 the district, from the C Department. And Mr. Stephen Hader was District Four, starts Teacher of the Year, Portion State FA Teacher of the Year. He's now gone to District, it's gone to District One and ready to hear that. To be considered for the national. We have great things going on in the classroom, because they got a pretty pretty teacher, you know, when it comes to. To choosing the award, who who could be a available for an award? Just throw their name in the hat and grab one. They're all just that, they're all that great. So I'm there, they make my job great and they make, make it very useful for me. And there, I invite you to kind of watch, you know, when stuff's going on, their classes are really fun, I mean I, sometimes I don't, I'm. Uh I'm not even doing an evaluation, I'm just walking in to see what's going on because it's so fun to see what's going on. So that's that's the sum summary. Um like I said, there's gonna be adjustments and. Things already in place for for plan for next year, so it's it's, it is going to look different again. It's not gonna necessarily be a cut and paste.
I I wanted just to add too, um I've had the privilege with both my children going through the program and then I've. Through many years with the district, but um. We also have an excellent, excellent director. Uh you've done an amazing job with the program since you've been here and um. I I really appreciate where you've taken our CTE program, so thank you very much.
Well, well, thank you. When people ask me what what my job really is, I say I create opportunities.
You do.
It's horrible, it's a horrible job to have.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I've been able to see the host of kids all summer, so many of them are working at the pool as lifeguards. So it seems like such a natural transition because they have a lot of the training as a head of the program. And that's just, you know, another great way that they're out in the community and and working as well.
Yes, yes, the host of kids, they, I mean, they come out, that's. Gosh, I think McKenzie had, I can't remember how many certifications she had this year, but they have. They have, you know, first aid, CPR, liver and pathogens, they they have multiple certifications. Gonna keep on making things better.
Yes.
Rick, looking.
Thank you.
Looking forward, because this is a four-year plan, is there anything that you foresee we need or would be a target to get to help the CTE program?
So CTE is very fortunate and very well-funded. So not only are we, we're fully self-funded out of, out of our, out of our enrollment. So some things that have happened, like when we moved into the new school. The school provided the classrooms. And some some of the tables, we provided, we updated all the equipment. And we took a couple of weeks to do that. In in the bond, there was only room for one greenhouse. CTE had the funds to purchase the other two greenhouses. So so other than the great support that I get, that we get from Prosser School Board and in the district. Uh financially, we're fine, in fact, um we also contribute, you know, the this. The district gets to take, take uh five or five percent off the top of our our funding. I think, and and but along with that, we use part of our funding to pay for some of the secretaries or a portion of the secretaries. Salaries and benefits, um we pay um basically for a counselor, but it's divided up over the counselors, so. So other than support. Um we don't need, we don't need financial support, um we're, we're really good in that, like I said, even with. With that big expense, we're probably gonna have about a fifty thousand dollar carryover for next year.
Awesome.
Yeah. I know, I'm, I was tickled over the anatomical table. That was phenomenal, everybody should see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't got, I haven't got to see what the VR, I mean, I've seen what the VR welding is like. But um I looked at that, I'm not too sure, we're not gonna have. A bit of a lab over time and have multiple machines like that. Because really what it does, it doesn't replace weld, you're you're still gonna have to burn rock. But it allows you to practice with without. You know, going through a lot of metal and building a lot of building pads over pads over pads.
So I'd like to just, in as a CTE, past CTE director, you need to be commended on the. Structure of your finances and questions are going in when I review the programs. Um you're ready, once the signature comes, I believe this has to be in by the end of the month, correct?
No, no, this is, this will be, this into September is when um I have this.
Okay.
In fact, the form factor, I don't, then I might just have come out.
Yeah. But for your purpose, this is your part of your reserve project, right, for your.
No.
Four seventy seven.
This is just starting the part of the end of the year.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So when we look at this, is this your twenty two, twenty three reflection on the first column? It shows first column twenty two, twenty three?
Yes.
That was your replaying on what we've done this year?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make sure I'm reading.
Yeah, they changed it up a little bit, she probably done the last thing.
All right, it's very well done, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Well, I'll add, uh you know, you and and the people that support the program do a tremendous job for for this district and in the high school. I did have a couple of questions on the goals for next year. Under, it would be page one, uh under curriculum instruction, um. I see, one, it says agronomy during normal sh- school day. Do we typically do agronomy outside of school days?
We do it, do it during zero hour.
Okay.
And we try every year to get it into the normal school day, uh but Stephen isn't, we ju- just hasn't been able to get. Hit hit that threshold for a class, it's none of the kids enroll in it. But it is a very important course and it is only a one trimester course. And it it it, so we we do have the funds to offer it.
Okay. Uh my next one, I think this is a, is kind of a big one, at at least in, in our current industry. Um work environment is the work ethic curriculum through micro. I see that you have it listed as a pilot.
Is that? So Jennifer, Jennifer McMurtry just finished the course, uh she did it in the last month.
Okay.
And so she's, she's gonna do the course, she's gonna do it in her um careers course. And just kind of see, see how it goes and 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 see if it's valuable and then. Hopefully, we can branch out within the CTE department. And maybe further run it, do a little more test run and then maybe. Figure out a different way to to reach, there are, to reach kids that don't necessarily, not every kid takes the CTE course. Well, they they do, they have to get their one credit, but they may not take that course where that would be within the CTE department.
Got you. Great, thank you. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the uh four-year plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the CTE uh district-wide four-year plan as presented.
Second that motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve the CTE district-wide four-year plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Rick, I appreciate it.
Can I ask one question before you get up? And it's regarding the twenty two, twenty three, do we have um the cybersecurity class?
Yes.
Okay.
We have cybersecurity class and we even had a couple of kids get credit through Wollwoll.
Great, thank you very much.
So moving on to item D is uh Human Capital Enterprises Perse- Professional Service Agreement. And. This is before the permanent superintendent search um to be started either. You know, here, hopefully here in the next, you know, few weeks, uh as we go through fall. And uh and work into the winter, so. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the Human Capital Enterprises Professional Service Agreement.
Been moved and seconded to approve Human Capital Enterprise Professional Service Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh moving on to reports, Amy, you're first.
And so we met with the auditor for some follow-up questions this week. And we did get an initial draft of a finding for the ECF program, which I mentioned a few times. And so we will be, you know, confirming all the the final details and getting that meeting scheduled for the exit. The board will let you know when that is, but we're inching up. And they had a follow-up, a couple of follow-up questions on the ASB, so we're not quite done with that area just yet, but everything else, all other elements of it have been completed. So we are behind schedule, but everything's still moving along, so you'll get the final on that too. And. Next week, we'll get the presentation for year-end projections for this year and then also an initial presentation for next year. And and then we'll have a couple of weeks to make modifications, so I'll kind of, I'll draw out some different numbers and kind of where we land, you know, with initial projections and then we'll have to make some decisions on. What to do um for next year, so that will be next week. And then also DA Davidson will be here next week for their presentation on like levy and bond and. You know, some of our history with that and to help with that conversation to determine the levy and I'll, you know, the next, the next levy election. And we'll have, the question I would have with that. The timeframe, July nineteenth initially, we have to have the final budget approved and signed by August thirtieth. So our tentative plan is that we can present, you know, we can send out the community notice two weeks ahead of time. Um August ninth and sixteenth, and then either adopt the budget on the sixteenth, or we can push it out one more week and to the twenty third. But we do have to give community notice two weeks in advance. Uh we could push it one more week and have it approved, like kind of on the last day on the thirtieth, it's due the thirty first, so we could push it if we need to. Um you don't need to make a decision tonight, we'll work with the superintendent. And but I do want to give you some time from the time of do the presentation, we'll have a few weeks to make those modifications before, because once we put it out for the community, we. You know, we want to make sure we communicate and give those last changes and make sure everyone has time to leave the final budget and everything, so. And anyways, just kind of putting that on your radar, we're down to to four weeks, five weeks.
So next week, we'll have a budget presentation. Okay.
For the study session.
For the study session.
And then we'll have the twenty sixth is a regular board meeting, August ninth is a regular board meeting, we have one more study session. And the twenty third, and then a regular board meeting, no, hold on, let me look at the calendar. The ninth is regular, the sixteenth is a study session, the twenty third is the next regular, we do not have a scheduled board meeting on the thirtieth, so if we had one, it would have to be.
Okay.
I don't foresee any reason, but we can't be done by the twenty third.
But we're gonna have that, uh the boys' basketball and had a tournament last weekend, it's been. It's been two weeks yet, my time's real up. They just had a major tournament for the weekend, they profited almost twenty thousand dollars. So they had quite a few expenses, but they had some really great turnout. And they followed all the ASB guidelines and rules and everything, so that went really good. Um I do recommend going forward that they go through the booster club, that's what other districts do for major events like that in the summer. And I did recommend that to the basketball, you know, basketball team, uh they can absolutely do it, it just makes it a little bit easier to. Um in the summer to go through boosters, so just for your awareness, uh but that was very profitable, so that's great. So I think tournaments and. It brings in additional money, it brings in other people to the community, you know, stimulating the economy, you know, great things, but it is a lot of work, it's a lot of work on the custodians. There's a lot, a lot of paperwork, a lot of tracking money, it it's very demanding as well, though, but that's something I've I've always been about, you know. Diversify our revenue, bring in more money, and so those are things that it is very successful and it's gonna be great for the girls' or the boys' basketball. They did share some of the profits with the golf basketball because they did help, and so that helps fund some uniforms. So that was very good. And uh the board did ask for an update on food service, so they will be coming in August to do a presentation on kind of the mentorship program, the summer meals and everything for next year. So we've got that on the agenda for August. And key cards, so we did do a soft launch on key cards at the district office. Um I'm still trying to work out some keys with the implementing or the um integration between the MO bank system and our Skyward system. So we're doing it just, you know, just the district office, so we can control that and then still hopefully do the full launch in the fall. So I'll be doing the key card training before my departure. So working on that, and then I might have to bring the policy back for a few minor revisions. I did meet with the the auditor about that and he did have some suggestions on. Um establishing some thresholds and things that I had in a procedure and a form, but not necessarily in policy. So I'll review that, make those recommended changes and then bring that back to the board. And and we, I didn't mention this earlier, but we are expecting probably a management letter for ASB. Um but I don't have all, I don't have all the specifics of that, so I didn't want that to be a surprise. Um and then GISA, our GISA affiliation card is on track to be launched, so excited, I don't want to take all the thunder from. As the superintendent, but so I've been giving updates on that, so I'll let her and.
You can show the thunder. You did the work.
Um we moved at the launch, so we're gonna launch it right away, so we can get people start to to use it. And and then we'll do major marketing and stuff with it in the fall, so we're two weeks in.
Yeah, and Rick, this, and even though I'll have a little bit of this, this is going to be big for our business side of the house. And trying to put a GISA branch in the school, so. And that will follow, oh, good, yeah, so great.
So we're really excited about that, and we'll have the minimum donation of five thousand dollars, so because we're able to launch it before August, which this also played into the decision. Um to just get it out there, get people started to use it, and we'll get that minimum donation, and then there's no cap. So to, just a reminder what this program is, anybody who uses KISA, they can sign up their debit card to have a Mustang logo on it, so it's a Mustang card. And then every time they sign that, you get, we get five cents back. We only get the donation once a year, so it's not constant, but at the end of the year, they'll pull a report on how many times the card was, their personal cards were swiped. And then we'll get a donation that we can use to support students. And so we have a minimum, so in case we don't need that, we'll still get money for just um for collaborating with KISA. We'll put their ba- their banners up, they'll be the official game sponsor for a couple of our home events for sports, so that, you know, they get something out of it too. And but they're gonna make it easier for students to set up accounts for our staff, and our staff and teachers to get accounts or do simple banking. And so anyway, it's it's gonna be great, and it's debit cards right now, but they're ex- extending that to credit cards as well, so. We'll encourage people to get a KISA membership and sign up for the Mustang card and then that will come back, so it's not like student cards. Anybody who has a membership at GISA or can get a membership at GISA and then use their card and it will benefit us. And a ton of other districts have have jumped onto this program. And GISA is very, very much about supporting local communities and giving back to education, so this is their way to do that. It does lock us into KISA, we cannot go with this program for with anybody else, we did sign that contract a few months ago. I think it was actually last year at this point, um. So anyways, we're finally, we're finally to the point, we're about to launch it, and so to, we're super excited about that, and thanks to Crystal Paul for really bringing it to my attention. And she had heard about a meeting and brought it to us, so kudos to you, Crystal.
On the, real quick, on the donation side, does that go into a specific fund or?
The superintendent was gonna speak to that.
Okay, I'll, then I'll hold my question then.
We did, um she was gonna ask that.
I do have a question for you on, I know you're going to do a detailed report next week, but. Do you have an estimate for us on the um, on the twenty two, twenty three, the uh cash reserve? For the general fund?
Um I did some, some projections of from revenue to date. Anticipated revenue and then encumbered expenses to date. And and we were looking at a two hundred thousand dollar hit to our fund balance. And, and we were looking at a two hundred thousand dollar hit to our fund balance. I'm just year, total year to date. We had budgeted a four hundred thousand dollar um, hit to fund balance. But my, the encumbrances do not include extra days, payouts. And any maintenance, these are any regular expenses that come through that are not through the PO already in the system. So I do anticipate that number being larger. And it also doesn't include any unanticipated revenue. So if we get additional money, then it doesn't include that either. But I will present that.
So just best guess right now, what do you anticipate that cash reserve is for the general fund?
I don't know if I feel comfortable putting, putting that up. I think we originally were going to land at. I have two different numbers in my head and they're very, very different. And I can provide that to you. I'd have to, I just want to, I want to look it up before I put it in public. I don't want to freak anyone out if I say the wrong number.
Okay. Could you send that to me, email? Okay.
Presentation next week and I'll put on any of those variances in there, you know, with what I would anticipate possibly could come in and what could, what could change my direction. For sure. Um, just based on how things have gone over the year. We might be over what our loss was projected at. We didn't overspend according to the plan, but the revenue hasn't quite matched some of those areas.
So I would like to see that.
Absolutely.
Before, actually, thank you. Thank you.
And then I'll be bringing, I've already mentioned this, but I just didn't get them done in time, but I'll be bringing back a couple other policies that I was hoping to, to present to the board.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Great job, Amy, especially with the key cards and the GISA card. It's great work.
Um, I don't know if Deanna is on still.
I am, but I've been got, losing you guys, so I'm just going to do one thing and I'll, I'll talk fast. I am still, we're still looking for nurses. Um, I do have a candidate who does have their bachelor's degree um, that I'm, I'm meeting with, I have a meeting with tomorrow. So I'm hopeful that we will be able to find um, at least one nurse and maybe do and adjust our plan a little bit. Um, but I'm, I'm feeling hopeful. This is a, someone who's here locally and wants to be a school nurse. She's currently working. Um, at Cad Life. So um, hopefully I'll know about, be able to keep, tell you guys what's going on there, because that's a very important decision. But our next board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Safe travels.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Well, it's pretty long, so I'm going to be as simply like, yeah. Um, so first of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity. Today is day seven of my new tenure in this roster school district, so thank you. Um, I want to start by saying that um, I've really had some great meetings. Um, some very formal and some informal in their nature. Um, I've met with Jesse Wilson, Jody Saban, had tours of both their buildings. Um, we're meeting tomorrow at one-thirty. Um, so you know, I got, everybody's in Bennett Avid, different things. Sean and I have been working, Deanna is in my relationship. It's just cruising, right? It's just been, it's been great. Andy How and I have spent. Four times driving around in a truck, right? And I'm so really feeling like. The relationships are building fast and are working hard. Um, met with Brett Dillahan today. I am just so excited and intrigued by the Mustangs for Mustangs program. It's just quite fascinating to me. Um, so that was great. I've met with three of the board members on a one-on-one. Anthony, they are meeting on phone, I think on Friday, and Peggy's back, so we'll be catching up with one another. So um, I'm a person about relationships and people, people first. I've already done some volunteering and spent some time in our community. I'm working hard to. Shake hands and, and do whatever. I participated in the second harvest food drive, was at Bethel Church. Um, even though I was late, I went to the PTO public in the park. I went to the summer school lunch potluck that was at, at the school. Um, we've started um, some planning for the parade, for the state's day parade. Um, really, really working on, um, I have a meeting with the police chief and the fire chief scheduled the next five to six days, depending on the day of the week. Um, so really trying to work on that, being seen and visible, um, that kind of work, right? Touring the buildings, um, for those of you, whether Fowler's a good word or a bad word in this room. Uh, Fowler Construction and I have a, personally have a really strong relationship and so. Um, in some of those particular areas, we're on a first-name basis. They already have their, my cell phone in their phones. So when I dial, they go, I heard you're the new one. So um, there's some, some great relationships and I think having had that past working relationship. Those have also come to fruition. Um, we talked about when it was a quick conversation, but about adding. In the CTE program and my, some of my contacts through Children's Hospital and finding us an athletic trainer slash sports medicine teacher. So those relationships will just continue to flourish. Um, in, on the legal side of the house, we have um, three legal situations I'm working through, gotten in kind of dirty, messy. Um, so I'm working with the teams on those and um, we'll be able to report to those in executive session where we're at on those, but I'm. Feel like I'm pretty confident in, in how that's going. Under the facilities category, everything from the water situation. Um, I don't know if you drove through, um, I've been driving once a day, seven days a week. Um, and we've had water on twenty-four, seven. I worked with Chad Bagley and some things are going on. We do have a couple areas, if you're here and you drive out. Um, if you, there's a couple low spots and you're wondering why they're basically yellow, um, there is water on those spots. Um, some of them at eight-hour sets. Um, so we're going to do a soil sample and we might have to do some fertilizer, some chip, some, I think it's called gypsum.
Gypsum.
Gypsum, sorry, gypsum. Um, but we're going to have to do some treatment to some of those areas. Um, a couple of those, there's a couple of spots in the baseball field. There's a couple of things like that. Um, Andy and I joked, um, everybody has a weed eater in their vehicle. And so when they're starting to go or do something, the weed eating was a, was a high priority. Um, we got, I worked with Amy and Andy, I don't know, we were together almost hour and a half probably today. The trees at the old Crosser High School trimming, bringing them up. Um, doing some fresh, just location. No, we do have an owl who lives in one of those two big trees. So the way in which we have to treat and, and be in the realm of the law is a little bit different than what we had planned, but we're going to make that into. Take that into consideration. Um, around the building, some state, uh, you'll see bushes changing and some cleanup. Um, I heard some amazing things about the greenhouse funding. That's just amazing. So we have the old greenhouses, one will be taken down and one will be surplus of the greenhouses, because we'll be able to surplus one. As much as they're probably not valued at a lot of value, the cost of removing them and um, so forth is expensive. So by surplusing them for a nominal fee, then they remove them and then that's actually a financial budget savings for us. Storage units, I am committed that all storage units that we pay for will be empty by August, October thirty-first. Um, so the sped one is on its way out this week and then we'll do a couple more and we're talking about. Which rooms and doing that, so we're committed to having that complete. Storage sheds on baseball, football, softball, so we have two containers already that are going up that way, so we can quit paying for the. Two that are at the baseball field. Um, a Title IX concern of mine is that. If we take two up, it doesn't matter who gets them, but we, each sport has to have one, so we'll be, we will be looking for a third container. Um, so that each one of the sports has their own container. We'll work on um, some branding.
To the shed.
So there's, no, we'll remove the shed. Yeah, um, so that they're equal. I'm concerned that if we um, leave the old small shed, then we have a, a compliance, a Title IX compliance issue, so we just. And it's kind of worn down. It's not very big and um, if we paint and brand them all, and what I mean by brand for those who are listening. Brand means either logos or naming or font, whatever we do with, and so forth. So if we brand them all the same and we. Were showing a, an equal. Representation. Um, I do want to talk about the Keen River View bats. Um, I, so just so you know, if you see the white Lincoln out, sitting out there, um, I was there at four forty-five this morning. To watch the bats going back inside. Um, I just want you to know that this is, there's a couple of things you need to be aware of. One, we cannot. Um, exterminate the bats right now. It's against the law until September one. Um, bats, even though they're gross and they grow so solid, they actually have a, a role in our ecosystem. And um, especially with our slow-moving river and the mosquitoes and they're all a part of that ecosystem. So we have, um. I don't know what their legally, or the actual formal name is. I call them bat tubes. Um, so there are two that comes out and kind of goes like this and the bats can escape from where they're at, but they can't come back in. So Fowler and I have a plan for enclosing all of the cracks above this uh, kitchen Baxter oven, it's called, inside the. Kitchen at Caravee, the two openings that are going into the ceiling where the basketball mechanism is coming down. Um, I have not been up in there. We're planning to go to, to up into the ceiling. Um, they checked the roof last week. We did um, find one other small piece where they may be coming in, so we'll be doing that with a commitment. That we are, it's just word bat-free, but bat-free by the first day of school. Now, we do have a problem inside the mechanical room that's there, so at, if you ever run and see the reenactment of the movie The Birds. You probably need to go to Caravee about four forty-five in the morning, between four thirty and four forty-five, right, as it's called. There's something in bat terminology by the way, I had to look it up. And there probably is. Five hundred bats flying in this thing, uh, in the, in the thing. It, it's kind of like, I'm in my car and I still want to do this. Um, and they're not always, they're not just go all the way in the building, so it can be long, but that's an area there. Um, and so when I spoke with Fowler, when they cleaned out the mechanical room, there was this discussion by the. Pest control people, they initially said that it was rat manure in the insulation, so for, and after further. Review, we think it was bat manure. And so the bats have probably been in the mechanical room for years and years and years. And so um, I don't know much about bats. I'm learning more every day. Um, they actually are. They go back to where they were, uh, kind of like a fish, you know, that goes back, those where they were raised and I don't know what that's actually called, I'm not as like. But they go back there. So we're working on that. We're trying to do it humanely, respectfully and yet. Um, cleanliness and safety for our staff and students. Fiscally, we heard the good news about GISA. While GISA's plan, um, it kind of sits in the world of sports. Um, it is not about sports, it's about students and education. Um, I think if you, um, when we talk to them, I think the idea is they use sports as the medium. Right? Because that's where people come and do whatever. So we've um, come up or we are coming up with. It'll go fifty percent high school, twenty percent middle school and ten percent to each elementary school. Um, and so the money that's done each deposit we get will be divided that way equally. Um, we don't have quite half of our students at the high school, but that's a mathematical, easy way to do that and everybody benefits. So I know that this is kind of a, a silly thing, but I don't carry a lot of cash and I'm a GISA member. Today I contributed between a few bills that I paid online. And my stopper, my Diet Coke and my, at McDonald's and my lunch, I commute, um, contributed thirty-five cents today. So about seven transactions. Now that doesn't seem, but if you take thirty-five cents for one person. And then you take that of what I do each day, right? I'm going to be a good big contributor to the GISA, so we are going to, um, to the, to the process of system. So that's the message we're going to try and say, send, right? This is a, uh, you're going to use it anyway. So you may as well use it with the processor card. Um, so that's kind of what we're working on there. I am still working with Amy on S R two and S R three. Um, I'm going to address your question about the fund balance. Um, for those of you listening, JE, or depending on where you learned your accounting, JE is a journal entry. In school system, which we call JV, journal vouchers. Um, there, I believe there's some funding that we need to move. From a basic education funding into or out of S R funds, and we can do that and that will help that reserve fund balance. Um, also, we talked today about the S R three and what's sitting in capital projects S R money. And what's sitting in the instructional side of the house. For those of you who don't know, it was an eighty, twenty split when we received our S R funding. And so we need to watch that and balance that. And it sounds kind of crazy, um, the eighty percent is capital projects, but did we? Everything that we bought for the building, did it really get, or buildings or construction practice, did it really get out of that S R? And that's something that we'll need to really do with the fine tooth comb. And I must say, it wasn't, I'm just saying, that's a thing that we have to look at to balance. And that's one of the conversations that you and I had when we met. Um, the insurance renewal, um, we just finished, did we click this in?
Didn't click then, but it will be done this week for sure.
So the insurance renewal is, is out. And that's just a snapshot we do of our buildings, facilities, equipment, things like that. So um, that's a good way for me to learn the system as well. What's in the, on the policy, what's covered? That's kinds of things. I'm happy to say we do have some contingency left at Whitestrom. Um, we did talk on, at the beginning of the meeting, we'll hear a presentation of the. Um, at the special meeting next week of the study session, sorry, study, study session, learning your language, study session next week. Um, so there may be a little bit used for that, but I think we're, we're doing in a, we're in a good spot financially with Whitestrom project. Um, so we've got that piece going on. Recruiting, I'm happy to say that, uh, Dan is still listening. I think we have five candidates for athletic director. Um, I'm really excited about that. Um, two of those are direct. I don't know if you're in the world of business, we call that spearing. Those are two direct phone calls and spears, so I'm hoping that, you know. That they understand that what we've got to offer here in Prosser. Same thing goes, we have a very strong lead on a business manager. It, um, the application came through yesterday for a direct spear. Um, I won't take credit unless we hire them and they're really great. Um, but um, I'm excited for, that we have the applicants in the pool. Um, so that's, that's the piece. Deanna mentioned the nurse, so that's super exciting. Under construction, um, we're meeting, Andy and I are meeting with the, a, a, a person tomorrow. Um, on the football stadium track, um, piece and the tennis courts, and so we're going to walk that tomorrow. Think we meet at ten tomorrow, so I'll have some more information to report on that. Um, I want to um, talk about. This little diagram, which you will get in an email. So I know that it's very small and I was trying to decide if I was going to send it, but then it really has to go into the public. Record, so it was just one of the things. So if you connect, all of you have been to the saves, I'm going to have you visualize for a second. So you're looking at the stadium and on the left is a triangular piece of hedge. Um, the, the herbivider hedges, evergreens, whatever anybody wants to call them on the left. We're not going to touch that right now. Then if you look into the right, um, there's the old pathway that pretty much nobody uses. It feels quite, feels kind of unsafe almost. And then the dead hedge and so forth. You can visualize where the um. Ticket gate is, and there's a gate that we walk through to go into the foot, football field of the stadium. Um, that hillside, it's kind of, it's actually kind of square. There's the new retaining wall from the new building at the top. There's a piece of chain link on the top of that. We um, met with a, some couple of organizations, businesses. Um, and then we're working with, um, to make sure we're AD, A compliant. So I did this little arrow, so. If you were sitting in the bleachers, it's a short distance to the path and to make it ADA compliant, it does have a switchback in it. And then it would have a hand rail and so forth. I think we've got enough money to do that before the first football game. So if that happens, we will be celebrating. Um, it will not be overly pretty with plants and trees and flowers, but it will have. Proper eco blocks, um, asphalt walkway, handrails and the pad at the top.
So is it just repairing the old walkway?
No, um, I can.
Be taking it completely out and starting at the bottom of the, you can't, it's hard to see, but starting at the.
Here's where those, so your student section's here in the middle.
Yeah.
And if you come in from the ticket booth, you kind of walk across the bottom, that won't be changed. But right here, you go up and it kind of, or it starts here and you kind of go up like this.
Yeah.
It'll start a little closer to the stadium, go out to a point and then back up to like, to the concessions. And this has to happen because the grade, the percent of grade can only be so great. And so even though it's more steps, we'll get more steps in, you want, you can put your pedometer on, but it will be way healthier and way safer. And, um, if we keep it at the A D A compliance, which there is a rule, just so you all know this, if you don't touch it, you're fine. But once you touch it, it has to be A D A compliant. So that does the grade and then people in a wheelchair, people with a walker, they would have proper access to that. And it will have a, a barrier, um, to keep the rock from getting in and so forth. So let's cross our fingers that um, all, all the contractors that we've been involved with know that they have to be out clean and sprayed and washed and cleaned before the first football game at home. So let's cross our fingers that we can, we can make that happen. Um, we met today, uh, we took the district office team over to the old high school. Um, we talked about offices and locations, a boardroom, all different kinds of things. So we kind of put our wish list together. We're gonna work on securing money so that we can move forward with that. It's not going to be a remodel. I don't want it in any way, shape or form. I, I don't even think we're moving a single wall. We may sheet rock one door open, um, and take out a door jam. But that is the extent of the remodel. It's a facelift, right? Some paint, some flooring in different areas, removing some things, new signage, signage on the outside of the building. Um, site, uh, washing the building, there's the Prosser, he, he's kind of looks like he's a fighting Mustang on the backside of the gym. Uh, wash that down and see if we can find a C T S O or a group or an art club or something to repaint that uh, on the side of the building. So we've got some great dreams, but I've told everybody and prepped everybody, it's go slow to go far. And so we're gonna start by preparing it properly. We're working on the H V A C, well, A C actually, and then making sure boilers all up and operational, looking for a mid-November move in. And I could talk for an hour, but that's where we're gonna stop.
Great, thank you.
I, I don't think, any questions? I mean, like.
Have you slept in the last seven days?
That's an incredible amount of work and I greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, it's, um, I want you to know this really is the Kim you got. This is Kim pretty much three sixty-five. If anybody knows or knows people who know me, that is pretty much who you get. Um, when I do check out, I do take my downtime and whatever, but it's for a while. We have a lot of work to do to be ready to go in about thirty days to, to student time or at least staff time. Right? We need to be ready. Anything else, Deanna? I don't know if you're still on.
I am still here. No, I thank you. I've got a good list.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Um, with that, we'll move on.
May I add one thing?
Yes, you may.
Did you get, in your school emails, you've gotten the hundred day plan and the location of what it's on on the website? Okay, so did you get them in your email?
Yeah.
No.
I didn't.
I didn't.
No, I did not.
Personal email just on the school.
So it didn't come, so when I, so Sean, when I.
Be in all staff.
So when you should have got, so I clicked a P S D staff when I sent it to everybody. You got it, yeah. So you got them. So I need to figure out what, and if I need to create another group, I need to make sure.
They should be, they should get all of our stuff.
Should have got it, um, Monday at ten or ten thirty?
No.
Okay, so we'll work on that. So I, that is my, I don't want to say error, but I learning, you know, it happens when you assume. Bad acronym for that, but, um, I assumed that when I clicked P S D staff, that you were included in that. So I will send that out to you to see.
Okay, thank you. All right, great report. Um, moving on to board member reports, we'll start with Jeannie.
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Peggy?
No.
Anthony? Nope, nothing. Lisa?
I saw what I think is the footing for the playground at K R V and I was wondering if we have a timeline, it'll be in, we hope before school starts.
Oh, yes, definitely before school start. I think we have an August second. That sounds, that's a wrong. I think a ship date of August or arrival date of August second.
Okay.
So, yes.
And is the footing at, uh, heights as well?
Better. Don't think, I've seen, let me restate that. I can't answer about heights.
Okay.
When I was there today for my tour, we did not discuss playground.
Okay.
But I will add, look at my list right here. Heights, playgrounds.
That's, that's all.
Great. I had a couple of questions, speaking of Fowler, um, construction, are we, are we done with K R V and heights? Are we still?
No.
When, when do we anticipate being done with that?
Well, we have a punch list that's continuing to go that I am now monitoring. I'm trying to take that up. Even though it sounds weird to say to take it off the principal's plate, but at this point, they're kind of mentally done with them. And they need to have somebody with a little more, um, you fix us or you, you don't get your check kind of conversation, right? And so I don't expect a principal to do that kind of conversation. That really needs to come from me. So, um, that's where we're at. The list is getting quite a bit shorter. Um, and some of the problems when I walked heights today is an example. Um, so they had a paint guy from the company who did painting show up. And they had all the right colors, but when they walked around, I don't know if you've ever done this in your house, you walked around and they touched up the paint. Well, let's say the paint wall was eggshell and they touched up with semi-boss. So you see the same color, but it's shiny here and it's flat. So those are the kinds of things that, um, now they get to decide, they get to come back and paint the wall. Right? Um, so those are the kinds of things. And, and Ronnie and Ryan, literally they are on a first name basis. They go, they saw me down the hallway with me. All right. You know, they, they almost roll their eyes or look embarrassed. So we're, we're gonna get to the bottom of that.
Okay.
Um, we talked today about, um, so anyhow, we're, we're getting there.
Okay.
Um, and they now know that they don't get their final checks until we're.
Thank you. Um, next up is just a poll for the rest of the board. We have a, so part of the H C E, uh, Human Capital Enterprises agreement, is we need to have a, about a one to one and a half hour meeting to go over timelines, calendars, um, and, and so forth. So I would, I would like to schedule a special meeting for August second to have that. And I'd like to see if that fits.
What time?
Um, it would probably be six.
August second?
Yeah.
Uh,
It works for me. Yeah, I have a PETA meeting that same night, but I can make that, I'll make it work.
Okay.
I don't think I have a problem.
Okay.
So six o'clock?
Yeah, unless we want to go earlier, but I think six, six works. Like the, okay. So I'll, I'll go ahead and schedule that for the second of August. Um, and I don't have anything else. Any other comments or?
I'm sorry.
I, I don't have anything else. Any other comments, questions? Do you guys have anything? You want to get out of here? Um, so future meetings, we will have a study session next Wednesday, July nineteenth, right here at seven P M. And with that, we are, thank you.
I'm sorry, we're not gonna meet till seven?
Um, the study session is at seven.
Okay, we're, okay.
Yes. I think it's in the, it's seven.
Do we have to go to the August second one?
No.
Okay.
Unless you want to.
How often are you guys having band rehearsal?
Um, it's every, we've done Wednesday.